All right, I'm gonna call this special select board meeting to open the MCFlock on June twenty of seven. Welcome, everyone.
Full house.
Full house. Welcome Doug.
There's more chairs back there. Oh, there's a chair over here.
Thank you.
Two chairs over here. Two chairs over here. Can you come there?
I don't know. All right, we have a few things on the agenda tonight. Everyone's here who's on it, so. Um. First thing is opening the fuel and diesel fuel bins. We could get that done quick. And then bump right in.
You had two bidders. One is Marcel Oil.
I assume the other was champagne.
Champagne, but they didn't.
Oh.
Separate one for each.
Well, that's nice. Is that normal for people to bid twice?
Well, it's, there's, they're bidding on diesel.
Oh, yeah. They were just covering their bases.
Getting twice. No.
All right, Judy, what do you got?
Fanplane Valley Fields will provide. Valero Rutland rate rack rate plus fifteen cents and all applicable taxes.
Okay.
Mine says. That's diesel or fuel.
Diesel, sorry. Mine is the fuel oil one. All the same, shambly about fuels would provide number two heating oil at the Valero Rutland Rack rate plus fifteen cents plus applicable taxes or a fixed rate of two eighty plus applicable taxes.
So this one is. Marcel's is fifteen cents over rack price. Today's price is two sixty-seven. They'll cap it at three seventy-five.
Diesel fuel or heating oil?
That's heat and oil and off-road diesel. This is on-road diesel. And it's fifteen cents over rack, two eighty-two. This today's price in M L three. Oh, what the hell was that? Why?
Plus twenty-four cents.
Right.
Mentioning. That's the fifteen cents over. Or no? I don't know.
No, it's not. I don't know why they did that. That's supposed that's not twenty-four cents. Why did they write that out like that?
Twenty-two plus point two four four.
That's not fifteen percent.
No, it's fifteen cents.
Should be fifteen cents.
Right, but that's not.
So it probably includes like
The taxes and
The taxes and.
Well.
Hmm.
Right. Remind me.
It seems to be the thing.
I have the Valero.
Fifteen cents. Valero, yeah. That's what Bob Noble put in the blur.
Yeah.
Our things is the Rutland Rack, it's the Valero Rack is where all the oil comes into and all these people get in out of there, so.
Yeah.
So what was?
So we, in the past, we've had champagne for a number of years now.
What was champagne?
And they're fifteen cents too. They're both the same.
Yeah. They're pretty much the same. That one is offering it capping it at two seventy-five, right?
No, they're capping the heating oil and off-road at three seventy-five. This one, they're not capping. They're on-road diesel, they're not capping.
Fanplane offered the fixed rate of two eighty for the fuel heating oil. And there's no fixed rate for the diesel. No. Have we used Marcel before? Find, it's who I use for mine.
I use too, but.
No, no. Howard, when Howard dropped it off yesterday, he says, you guys are gonna have to decide. He says, because I'm matching Champlain's bid. In the past, he's been like a twenty-two cents. This guy, he was at twenty-two cents when this guy was at ten.
Yeah.
So this guy's up to fifteen.
Yeah, have we had any issues with champagne?
Do you have a question? So here was one driving it around.
Not really.
How many, how long we've been with the champagne?
Like five years. We haven't had any freeze-up issues, which is amazing.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, if anyone's expecting a damn plate.
Yeah.
Yeah. Make a motion. Make a motion to accept chanting Valley fuels diesel and heating oil bids.
A second.
In favor. Let's see.
So when Howard wants to know why, he's gonna give him your gun's numbers. Pass it to Terry. He's the one that actually got it started bidding for it a number of years ago, probably ten years ago.
I guess he shouldn't have done that.
Fair play. So this year he was down.
All right, um. All right. Should we move anything or did you put this on just?
No, let's, let's move stuff. I can do the generator.
Okay, sounds great. We're gonna do old business afternoon. So new business.
You're up.
Cher. I am.
You're up.
I'm open for questions, whatever you got.
Well, first is you have the new contract for us?
I do have a new contract.
That's great.
And then the interest of focus lawyer, Nettow and I had a conversation with the share a couple of weeks ago and said, we didn't want to increase the hours necessarily. We just wanted to be, have more productive enforcement. So I think we need to have a conversation about what the, that expectation is.
Right. Yeah, we talked just about.
Yes, so that, at that time, we talked about switching the officer that works in town to someone different. I can do that, but I cannot do that until probably the end of July. Because I have them coming back off a medical leave that I'm hoping will be back at the end of July. That will allow me the ability to make some, some of the contract counts.
They go on a focus like early morning and.
Yeah, currently Justin, who works here, has three young kids.
Yeah.
And for the school year, he's doing drop-offs. His, his wife is not really helpful.
Right.
So he has them all the time, so he has to drop off at school, so he's together. By the time he gets here, it's eight o'clock or nine o'clock, whatever.
Right.
Five grand and so. It's missing the morning of new traffic. Where I think if, when we can make that change, it'll be someone that can.
Who's the gentleman that was up here the other day? The recent.
Uh, Greg Ricketts, I believe. Just covers some time.
Yeah, because the speed studies pretty much show who's going, not who, but when it's going fastest.
Yeah, it'd be great if it showed who. It'd be awesome if it showed who. Problem solved. Score us.
Uh. How do you two feel about that shift happening? Yeah?
Yeah, definitely. If we can make that happen.
Yeah, like I said, it'll be July, end of July.
Okay.
Um, depending on when he gets released, but we'll be mid-July. Um, during a couple of weeks, just in case they don't move a little bit longer. Ended up having a really bad, well, they were in a car accident, so. He's just finally getting back. He's, he's working, but he can't physically work.
Right.
Because he doesn't make it yet.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't think you need more hours at this point. I think it's just.
Better enforcement and the times.
Yeah. And is there anything?
And at one point, at the very beginning, I think you didn't want to be like Wallenford. With Nelson tips, you know. Met sixty thousand dollars out of fines.
Right.
On the other hand, you know, if we're making a thousand dollars a year and passing this twenty-four, it might be nice to get a few more dollars in fines.
Yeah, and I think with the shift and catching the early traffic. You know, not every day of the week, but you know, maybe you haven't started early a couple of days and then later a couple of days, you'll catch both sides of it.
And they'll get this, they'll get the drift of it.
Yeah, you know, and that's the thing, you know, you get a few day, early days and then people will say, oh, they might be there today.
Right.
Drive slower.
Right.
Which is the goal.
And is there anything that has changed in this contract?
Uh, just the hourly rate. I think there was a three percent increase from last year.
Yeah. But otherwise, it's all the same expectations and.
Yeah, everything they're worrying about, other than the rates and.
Do you want to?
This last year's, but not the year before, right? Right. Last year you added in that you were paying them for some vacation time or the time.
See, it's basically that's for training time because I have to send them and so they're gone for the day and then that's just my, I mean, I guess I could add another percent or two to the contracts and do it that way, which.
No, it was just, it was just a surprise when the bill came and, you know, this was.
Yeah.
That's how it was worded and I looked at that last year's contract and it's in the contract. But the year before it wasn't, so it was just something that was new.
Yeah, we had kinda, actually, my clerk had forgot that we put that in there, so like, they all went out at the end of the year, kind of. But I say, you know, we kinda need to do that quarterly, you know, rather, I mean, Tim was not so bad, it's only ten hours, but what's wrong with those forty?
Yeah.
So they get a bill for forty hours for training at the end of the year, so I'm gonna kind of split that out, so it's a big bite for the towns.
Does anybody who's here have any questions for Cher?
I do.
Cherry?
Uh, my question is, um, people, I'm on, was on the speed committee, the traffic committee, but people say, I saw this car and it passed me or it was speeding. If they get the license plate number, what can we do? Or what should someone do with that?
If it's someone that's chronically being a problem and can give it to us, we really can't write any ticket or violations off somebody else's word that that was happened. Um, but it would at least give us someone to look at, you know, if we had a description of the car or had the plate number.
Okay. And, and who do we send? Just call up the department?
Yeah, you can call the sheriff's for our, what, what we'll do is, uh, I believe you have Justin's cell phone number.
I did.
You better call him directly, but when we make a change, whoever the new officer is will do the same thing because they all have cell phones from the department, so we can.
Okay, thank you.
Leave it to them so it doesn't get weeded down somewhere.
Yeah. Yeah, my only other question was about, um, what we've already said, just earlier and later.
Right.
Yeah.
That is the focus.
Anybody else? Questions?
We just want you to sign the contract that unfolds in effect Saturday.
Yeah.
I have it, just out of curiosity, is the east road where most of the, uh, speeding occurs?
Yeah.
Yeah, I believe with the street structures, that's probably the yeah, the higher area.
Yep. Was somebody what, going hundred and thirteen on this?
One thirteen. Hey, have you, um, have you guys talked about dispatch?
The, this is all on hold right now.
Okay.
Um, it was started and then the state stepped back in or somebody told the state that they needed to have more studies, so they put everything on hold.
Okay.
I did get forty thousand dollars in new radio equipment, that.
Just sitting there doing nothing.
Off, so.
Well, at least you got that.
Yeah, just got that installed.
Did you have any questions about the contract?
Yeah.
My, people, go ahead and sign this.
Yeah.
One of you moved in the second and second. Well, I did.
I'm gonna fill this in, you guys start that process. You want me to move?
Go ahead, that's all.
I wonder that we accept the Rutland Sheriff's Office contract for the next fiscal year for
A second.
Full year. All in favor? Hi.
I'll make a copy and then you can.
Do we need something like a spreadsheet?
Sounds like another one.
Never wanted.
Really, I mean.
I don't really, I don't think we've ever filled that number in. I don't know what's number.
We didn't like, I mean, I remember it last year.
We didn't know if we had a special number for the yes, the front.
Yeah, secret though. I believe it's all, yeah.
All right, anybody else? Anything for Dave while he's still here? Do you have any questions for us or?
No, if you've got concerns, um, where you're seeing speeding or an issue or with the author, just reach out to me directly and I'll do as I can to get it rectified and hopefully get things back on the right track.
And when it comes to having them park somewhere regularly to sort of create that like habit of slowing down? Do we need to find a place that they can do that? Are driveways just considered acceptable or?
We definitely will use them unless somebody comes out and says, hey, don't park here anymore.
Yeah.
And then we stay away from it and we don't run into that too a lot and a lot, but occasionally somebody just doesn't like a setting in front of their house.
Right.
But we will until
Right.
somebody complains and then we just move it and.
I mean, I've seen them parking at Ruth Gaffman's house and I don't know if she's.
She's a chronic offender.
But I mean, if it was, if we asked her if it was okay if they were there regularly and then.
I don't believe we do. I mean, I, we just will use a spot and if they come home, we'll move and like I said, if they if somebody comes home and says, hey, please don't stay here anymore, then we, then we won't.
Okay.
Most people are polite about it, some people are not, but like I said, we usually don't run into a lot of issue with that.
Yeah.
That is actually a pretty good spot to set.
Right.
It's traffic both ways there with the front rear radar, so.
Yeah. Would it be helpful if we asked Ruth and then they could just? No, do we know Ruth has a feeling about it? Does she mind having?
I don't think she minds, if there are people that want them to come park by them.
Yeah, we get a lot of those requests, uh, it'll people stop and say, hey, you can park at my driveway at fifty-five Main Street or whatever.
Yeah.
Try to make a presence in that area as well. But yeah, if there's any issue, just reach out to me directly and I'll, it is taken care of.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
And you aren't still on your fourth town?
Yeah.
A lot of that agreement that we've kind of, which seems to be working pretty well, I think, for the most part, so.
Yeah, and when we get the new person, will that person be covering the same four towns or will we be put in with like Danny and?
It may be. Yeah, I'm thinking when I switch, I'm gonna switch him from every
Okay.
other four towns and put him at a different location than somebody new in the whole town area.
Yeah.
If my plan comes together, something in the ballpark and new judge.
Well, sounds great. Anything else?
You're good.
You're welcome to stay for the rest of us.
You have any other moving things you're covering?
Uh, we have a recreation committee on that. Yeah.
Hang out with that.
Okay, great.
Open that door.
What are the four towns?
Uh, well, is it Wells?
No, it's.
There we go.
Wells is in the form.
All right, Doug, Robbie, you're here to talk about the recreation committee?
Okay, Robbie, do you want to start?
Um, sure, well, I actually want to know like what that actually means. You know, Wallenford actually has a mission statement for their, for our community, for, uh, to read, just so you guys have an idea of what we might do for people. So their, uh, statement is, our mission is to serve the needs of the community through quality facilities and parks by offering lifelong learning through recreation and cultural programs. So kind of spinning off of that, I think Doug and I were already on the conservation committee, but a lot of times it seems to bridge into what things end up being rec, rec focused, which we are both very rec focused people anyways, so. Hearing that it could have been something for us, we thought maybe we could step in and, um, throw in some ideas about what we could eventually do and what might be good for the community.
Um, yeah, so there has been a rec committee in the past and, um, having been a longtime member of the conservation commission, we had some mission group where the conservation commission has been sort of doing a lot of recreation stuff and it, um, it kind of dilutes some of the conservation stuff, so we thought it would be really good to have a committee that really focused on recreation. Um, so, um, and we, and we have a special interest in um, developing the town lot down here for some recreation uses. Um, especially stuff that's what I would call low hanging fruit. Um, things that are easy to implement, uh, you can do without much cost. And just to generate some, some interest in that area.
What are you talking about? What are you talking about right in there?
Uh, so we'd probably mow a path around it, brush all the path to, for people to walk or jog or go birding. Maybe put some picnic tables. Um, maybe a disc golf course. I, I like to call it frisbee golf, but Robbie directs me, it's disc golf. Um, um, you know, those are, those are things that could happen pretty easily without much expense and it probably to start, the disc golf course wouldn't be the fancy baskets. It would be a five-gallon bucket on a stick that you have to hit with the bristle. At least that's what I do at my house. So, uh, what are some or other ideas to start out, Robbie?
Uh, we also were just talking about along with those trails, if we have some pretty rigorous hiking trail, but, um, maybe access to doing just like biking, especially for younger kids. I don't know if anyone's been over to East Polley to have that, we're a little um, where there's a little little rocks you can go over and stuff like that. So if that space seemed like, again, a pretty easy thing to, just a little bit of labor or some people to put something together and then we could have access for younger children to have something to do, um, just because our rooms are so busy, um, there's not a lot of places to bike. That would be an option. Um, and then at, you know, looking forward into the future, um, I know there's a lot of people that play volleyball and pickleball and then you know, in the summer, they still play inside. You know, in the future, there might be a potential space for somewhere for, for back to the outside.
Yep, um, in terms of, uh, walking trail or a a mountain biking trail, it's kind of nice down there. It's, there's sort of mixed habitat. There's open meadow and there's, um, you know, developing forest. And you could sort of weave trails in and out of the woods. Um, we would like to talk to Eric about consolidating some of your um, stuff down there, you know, maybe putting stuff all in one zone. I know you have culverts and piles and I don't know what else down there, but um, so that we could utilize a little bit more of the space. Um.
And you're accessing that.
Uh, so access is an ongoing issue. Uh, for now, it would have to be people uh, walking in from the Route one forty and, um, and, uh, I mean, you're well aware that we're talking about future walking access, uh, through your property, but what, you know, that's sort of an open-ended question. Um, you know, what's, how's that? And we would really love to improve that access. Um, I mean, it'd be ideal to have walking access from Mountain View Road here where people could park at the, at this lot right here. The, uh, the town office parking lot. Um. So, and I think in terms of accessing it from Route one forty, we would want to, um, talk with Eric and uh, talk with the select board about, are there ways that we can do that safely? Is there a potential or parking up, uh, actually on the meadow? You know, I mean, when you have to drive through the transfer station and up that little hill. So, um, and I don't think it would be it certainly wouldn't be year-round parking. And, uh, I think it would be fair weather parking. That's how I would term it.
You, you had a trail down by your house from out here by the Esker. Is that something that's still open? I don't have it open here to know.
A trail that comes across the Esker?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's still there.
On, on.
On my side of the channel.
I just then.
So it's, yeah, there's a trail that goes, uh, from Channel Road, goes north on the Esker and, uh, and then it kind of splits at the cemetery. Um.
Does that get much use?
Those for me.
I hear everybody that.
It does. Brett Ains used to use it.
Um, I think, uh, Ray Pratt and his.
Yeah, Ray and Meredith walk on there. Yeah. Um.
Is that on the state land?
First, that, that trail is mostly on state land. It crosses our land a little bit and someone's building a new house down there, um, but it's gonna.
There'll probably be tape on anybody that goes by.
On that, on a cemetery and something like, somebody's building a new house. I'm sure. What's my thoughts on our trail?
Hers.
Oh. Uh, I don't know. Uh, you know, it's her property now, so, uh, there is, so there is a fork that goes up the other way around the cemetery and comes out down near the bridge. Um, and then, uh, I have permission to, uh, walk across George Harris and then continue down onto state lands. Um, down through the island and into the channel.
I was just trying to get some idea of how much time you're being used or how much interest there is in doing something here.
Um. So I think, um, my question is you seem to have a pretty clear vision for, like where you want to start, like this simple walking path with bike and walking path. Like, um, is there anything else that, um, like beyond this lot that you have in the, in your mind, like?
Robbie had some ideas about, um, the existing playground ball field up there, didn't you, Robbie?
Yeah, I mean, just generally things that possibly that like that mission statement said about just like other facility stuff, park stuff, um, there's kind of like one broken basketball hoop over there. I think so, it could net up, which is pretty cool. But I mean, just is there any opportunity to have more stuff for our kids to have in terms of uh, outdoor sport recreation stuff? And I know Wheaton always tells me about old softball games you guys used to have and can we put something like that just together and then paint some lines in the field and then start something like that?
You want to talk to Boots?
I, I've heard, I've heard legends. So, yeah, and sparking interest in that, seeing what, like putting that back there, seeing people come and then also just what other things that people might be interested in, uh.
We had to stop softball because Hollis and Marshall kept hitting home runs and we'd lose the balls in the woods.
Think on balance.
Um, speaking of the woods, I did talk to Adam Bevill about it and he was open to having a discussion about, you know, trails going in and out of the woods up there beyond the line of the
The tram?
The town owns, you know, those outdoor classrooms there. So, you know, if the rec committee would be willing to discuss that with somebody, that might be an option to you.
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, it's obviously much grander still, like in town, but if anyone's been into the Pittsburgh area, where they have uh, their rec center, it's beautiful. There's basketball court, soccer, uh, there's a little swimming area, so I'm anything like that, it's just kind of, I know it's smaller, but we can side it, right? And it was great for me, like having two young kids, sometimes you just want to get out and have to do something and that, just kind of that playground right now. Anything else to say?
In addition to young kids, uh, you know, a nice gentle trail down here would be something that would be appreciated by older folks in town also, I think, you know, the
Some of them are walking around the ball field now.
Yeah.
I've been encouraging, go do that because it's open, like a nice place to park.
Yeah.
You know, they can walk, they can see.
This would be similar to that with a little more varied terrain, you know, some forests and meadow. Um, more ticks.
I wonder if there could be a, wasn't there an ARPA or, um, AARP grant for like safety for seniors who can write a grant to improve the trail for them since they're currently walking on a very busy paved road?
Well, they're not walking.
Well, they were the
They were, but they didn't want to be it.
Um, do any of you have any questions?
I would say let's not take away too much of Eric's space. He does need to perform a job for the town. And then do we have any concerns about liability with people going across the transfer station and the town garage area?
I think Doug and I talked about not giving too much energy into that space and really figure it out, what it would mean for access. Is that, I mean, there'd be a lot of work to do just getting. Is that, I mean, there'd be a lot of work to do just getting things set down, trying to find the right trail. So if we can't find some. Kind of access that we all agree upon that makes sense and is safer for people, then I don't know if that's the right experience. How, how big, how long of a trail are you guys thinking?
How long of a trail? Well, the whole parcel there is only probably five acres. Is that about right, Hollis, you think? I'm guessing it's about five acres, so it wouldn't be longer than. Probably half a mile, something like that.
So it might not, um, I'm just thinking, uh, uh, if Adam Gettle is amenable to having a conversation. You actually have parking, like you have ample parking rate up at the community center. You know, if you, you know, if, cause that is, you know, that's, that's a whole different can of worms, but just, I was just thinking that, you know, if you guys. Could put some energy into building. Smaller trails, especially for kids in, uh, the school. If there was some way that, you know, you guys, that might be, you know, a. A better lower hanging fruit that would probably benefit the school as well as older people as opposed to. Going down into and moving around into there. Something to think about.
I think there's, you know, you, I mean, if we had a rec committee. You know, there are, there's more than one project on the horizon.
Circle that back around today. So we are here to, you know, we didn't have anybody sign up to be on a recreation committee, would initially just put out and so. You're here to pitch us why we should form a rec committee. I personally feel convinced. Do you feel like you need more people to be on this?
Certainly. Yep, and aside, besides us, uh, Colin Bolts also has expressed interest. The three people who have sort of volunteered so far are all on the conservation mission. So there's sort of an overlapping. Interest here.
Do you have any questions, Kevin?
No, I'm good with it.
And then I think a lot of these questions and concern can be.
As we go along.
Once they're formed and have a meeting and I think, you know, coming back with a. Coming back to us with some sort of proposals over there.
My buildings, uh. Answered it all.
Correct. I mean, I think absolutely we can. Bring that up.
Right. And I think, uh, in terms of Judy, your question about, um, Eric's stuff. I mean, it seems to me like that space is big enough that we can, you know.
I would hope so.
We can accommodate each other, um, so. Um, I, and in terms of moving your stuff, I would just like to have it all sort of in one. Pile instead of three or four different piles.
And, and checking with if it. Ends up so that that is feasible at some point. You guys have to check with insurance and see.
In terms of insurance, yeah, we, we haven't really looked into that at all. I mean, I know the town does have an umbrella policy. Which would probably cover people recreating down there, but there is then the whole issue of. Traversing through the transfer station when the town garage.
How, and it was the currently the hiking trails are under the town's umbrella policy for. The stuff up here.
I believe so. Isn't that right, Gil?
Right, because the, yeah. Because the, the land trust got the right of way for to do this hiking trail up through there. So that's, that's a town entity and. I think the conservation commission is in charge of.
Yes.
Maintaining it. But those are all things that the rec committee can discuss once they get meeting and, you know, have issues. It's, it's not all be decided.
But we certainly would like more members. So we probably should publicize that. The other thing that we talked about doing was, uh. Some kind of survey, surveying townspeople to see what, um, what. People are interested in developing, you know, what kind of recreation people want to see. Seems like pickleball is all the rage right now.
Well, for a few people it is.
Yeah, but there are probably other things too.
If you guys came up with a paintball course, I think that would be, you know, that there will be a contingency of people that would be interested in that.
Okay. Maybe.
I was just gonna say we could combine the two, paintball and golf. I am, I'm on with that one.
All right, uh, Gil, Judy just brought up, did we officially? Do we have to recreate the recreation committee?
Cause you dismissed it. Ran for it, so yes, you should officially create it, say how many, you know, numbers you want on it. Appoint the three that have volunteered already and. And ask them to come up with a miss, a mission statement that.
Yeah.
They bring back.
All right.
What she said, there you go.
Make a motion. To reinstate. Reinstate the Plymouth Recreation Committee with a five member. Sized at five members with.
Five members.
Appointing.
Start with that.
Yep. Appointing. I'm trying to think of last names, Doug Fontaine, Robbie Leeds and Colleen Bulch. And looking for two more volunteers.
I think keeping it to five is good because we'll have a hard time going if you're trying to go to a seven member board.
Sounds great. And then, you know, come back to us with your mission and. We'll keep asking questions and you can keep answering. Sounds great. Thank you. Anybody else?
Good.
Do we need a second and?
Oh, you like actually make the motion and pass it?
I thought you were.
Oh, I was. Okay. Well, I'll be the motion. All right. Estimated end of your budget discussion. Next month, that's fine. It's.
Sounds good.
Here for the last couple of weeks.
Yep. And then it's, are we going to transfer the fiscal year twenty-three town garage expenses from the capital building fund to highway?
It was sixty thousand dollars, so probably you should.
Does anybody, we were gonna think about it last meeting. Does anybody have thought about it? Have an opinion?
Good with transferring it. I'll give you my account number.
All right, would either of you like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to transfer the. Sixty thousand. The capital building fund. From the capital building fund.
You'll put the exact number in.
Sixty thousand and eight. Do you want to do the sixty thousand and eight?
Sixty thousand and eight.
Great. Second, I'm all in favor. All right. Unlicensed dog ones. What is this one?
Yeah, there's still a bunch of dogs that don't have good licenses. So the select board needs to sign this, so we can send them. Animal control officers after them. And Kathy never wanted to do it because it says you can put them out of their misery, though. We've never done that.
I don't imagine David would.
It's not the dogs that are bad, it's the owners.
You know, anybody that goes to dog training, the owners get trained, not the dogs.
So do we put down the owner?
No, can't do that.
I think just sterilize them or something.
The owners?
All right, all right. This is a recorded meeting. All right, next, um, Glenn, Carol. Cemetery Association.
And that would be the cemetery that's down by Nelson and Betty's, uh. Property and it is the active cemetery for Timmer. So.
That's where everybody goes.
Yeah, everybody go, well, in the end, I guess. So we've run into, we've run into a shortfall for our mowings. For budgeted twenty-five hundred dollars from the town. And we would like to raise it another eight hundred to cover six mowings for the year. Our mowing has gone up to five fifty mowing, so.
And this is FAS.
I guess. When John got done, we did have other people look at it and they were. Excited about it until they looked at it and then they didn't want to do it.
Too much weed work and.
Yeah, it's one of the hardest cemeteries to, to go and take care of.
It's not an exciting cemetery, well.
So we're, we. We try to fill in with lot sales and, um. Donations, but we've had very few either.
You need flyers.
Well, it's good that nobody's dying or thinking about that, you know, so that's not a bad thing.
If you know anyone who wants to buy a lot.
Yeah, yeah.
If you buy one, you get one three quarters off, you get a quarter off.
Yes, the people who really need the lots can't buy them anymore.
Buy one, get one.
All right, so if we increase this eight hundred, my question is, Gil, does this go into effect? This wouldn't go into effect itself.
You can do it out of next year's budget, right? There is a little surplus in this year's budget that you could.
Hold them.
Could do it, but they're also gonna want it in FY twenty-four.
Right, so we didn't budget it this year, so it'd be.
So what's our, our funds available?
They could use ARPA funds or we could probably. You know, the, the general budget is not overspent. There's still some money in the general budget that they could probably use that, about eight hundred bucks, you said.
It'll be about sixteen hundred, right?
So we're, you know, we do everything that we can to try to buck us, uh, Dave Gilmore and Bob Bradley. Uh, do the spring paint up so that, so it's quite a bit there and try to do our own headstones. Repair, um, but. It's not coming in and we, it's something that we want to keep respectable, so. Six times a year, mine is kind of.
So the, the ask is, is an additional eight hundred dollars?
Yes.
Total.
Yes.
Do I need to re-accuse myself since I'm on the, the association?
I don't think so.
No, I think as long as you say it. Yes, you're part of the Cemetery Association. If anybody has any objections, you know, you could raise them.
She is our treasurer, is eight hundred the right figure? So thirty-three, you're about thirty-three hundred.
Sorry, thirty-three hundred is for.
Going forward.
Adding eight hundred to your current, but sorry, I got a little confused. Understand. All right, Kevin, do you have any? Questions?
No.
All right, uh, I'll make a motion that we. Increase. Up to eight hundred dollars, um. And we will pull that from our general budget.
Yeah.
This year and. I guess it'll just be for this year, cause you, and then next year we can have it budgeted in.
But we've already approved the FY. Come back. Ask for it again.
We just have to remember to increase it, um.
So you're gonna come back in July next year, or you don't get it? I'm sorry, I mean. Just the way it is.
Somebody increases it like that, it goes on the warning at town meeting, say shout the town, you know, get. An additional eight hundred dollars. So we can put that on the warning for the FY twenty-five budget. But in the meantime, they have two years that their tons are hanging them.
Yeah.
Sort of.
And do we need to put that in the motion that we're gonna pull it from our unspent?
So how are you gonna word that one?
I don't entirely know. All right, the motion is that we pull eight hundred dollars to cover the expenses for the Cemetery Association for FY twenty-four? Is that right?
Do you want it? Do you need it for this year or do you need it for this summer?
I think the summer would be fine.
Yeah, okay.
That's my motion.
I'll second that.
All in favor? You're very welcome. Thank you for taking care of it. All right. That's all we have. Adhere.
The electrical bids.
All right, sorry, I was just going down. The next on the list.
And I didn't put on there, amend the agenda, so.
You guys get to open them up. I didn't make a big star next to this one up here and put an arrow down, what I was supposed to do.
So there should be two things in there. One is the bid for the generators for the town office and firehouse in a separate. The running electricity. Because that's not part of the grant. The grant is the generators and the upgrade to the.
So this is grant, this is.
This is separate.
Yep.
This is what we care about for the grant. This is what we'll need to know for.
Yes, the grant is also gonna be doing the other work because they're gonna be right here working on it.
What were your two numbers from sevens?
Uh, then. Four thousand one hundred and the total price was thirty-two thousand seven hundred.
I think is this one just for the old creamery? This is for the old creamery power feed and then this one is for, so it's thirty-two, seven hundred for the. Generators. Yeah, the grant. There are two entirely separate.
They're separate things.
I got lots of different phrases, um, this is Matthew Corey. So the two hundred amp service upgrade. For a panel in the basement and on the first floor is four thousand five hundred dollars. Two hundred amp automatic transfer switch and eighteen K generic generator installed, does not include propane hookup. Or building of the concrete pad was. Thirteen thousand dollars. Power to the old premium building, sixty amps of panel feed to the town office with six four foot LED lights and. Four GFCI or a septical stitch to be done by the town that is three thousand eight hundred dollars. And then the firehouse is fourteen thousand five hundred dollars.
So you need to add all those numbers up except for the thirty-eight hundred. Could be the grant.
Right, so the creamery is thirty-eight hundred from him, that's right.
Yep.
Then. I'm gonna use my phone because that's.
So it looks like. Stubbs' grant is thirty-two seven and Corey's is thirty-two. And old creamery stubbornness is four thousand something and raises thirty-eight hundred. Is that right?
Um, unless I missed the number, I got the thirty-two thousand for everything but the old creamery.
Yeah, right. How much was stubborn?
Forty-one hundred.
Forty-one?
Yep, forty-one hundred.
Kathy, are you want some input here?
Uh, it doesn't matter to me. I will tell you that our total grant amount. That we budgeted was thirty-seven four fifty and we get a fifty percent reimbursement for that. So these numbers are pretty close to what we thought, which is great. And then the remainder goes for the propane hookup.
It's unclear to me if Stubbs was gonna provide the pads, the two generators. Maybe it says in.
There are no deviations from this.
And Corey will don. Matt Corey emailed and said that. He made a mistake on here, the cement pad is included.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, uh, Matt said he was gonna use a fiberglass pad. I don't know if that's an important distinction, but it's like a. Pre-made thing that you just plop on the earth, which actually for our. Environmental and historic preservation, uh, whatever it is waiver, uh. If we don't disturb the soil next to the, um. Next to the town office, that's really good because if we did disturb it and we found a. Archaeological artifact, the job would get shut down and it would be a pain in the neck. So, I don't know if that's a reason to pick one over the other, but. I think they both have us covered.
Which one do you want to see?
So with Stubbs, are we doing the concrete pads?
It doesn't specify. So.
It's in the scope of work, so if he's.
No deviations from the scope.
Right.
Matt Corey is who we had worked down at the town garage.
Yes.
Did you find that acceptable?
Yeah, it's good.
As long as it doesn't pack include the, the pads, I believe Matt is the, the better number.
By seven hundred bucks.
Right, not by a lot, but. His is better for the creamery, by.
Three hundred. If, if Stubbs must include the pad because it's part of the scope, so.
Right, it says that.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I didn't realize that's true, so, yes.
You have anything you want, one or the other? I, I think as long as we've got an email saying he's gonna do the pad.
Do you have, it's in an email, it's like written down.
Yes.
Okay.
He sent me, he, he left it in between, in the drop box there, and then he sent an email and said, you know, he forgot to take it out of the email, this is what he emailed last.
Right. This does also say.
He's changing the same thing that he told us before.
Yes, definitely.
To make sure that it was in there.
Yeah, because he also put the wrong date in for when it was valid for, eleven fifteen, twenty twenty-two.
That, that's when we got the quote for him before, so we could do the grant, so we had a number to give to the. You know, who, who were getting the grant from, we had to have some kind of ball, I think.
This is the material price, the cost for the material may change, Stubbs say, cost for material may change.
Well, I think if you accept that bid, we're very clear that it's a fixed price bid. Because it's federal, it, it's, it's fixed price.
Well, Corey says, due to the uncertainty of material availability and fluctuating prices, the material cost may change.
You would probably have that with Stubbs as well.
I would assume. I was, I mean, it's not in here, but I would assume. He would, best of, you know, the same thing.
In the original quote.
Certainly not gonna eat gossick materials.
In the original quotes we got, they both said, or Stubbs said, I'm looking at Stubbs, that the pricing was valid for thirty days. So I think if you decided tonight and you called up tomorrow and said, quick order for materials, you'd be okay. Um, because, Gail, didn't you just get these like in the last day or two? It's not like they did them a month ago when the bids went out.
Stubbs came yesterday, and Matt dropped his off last night in the drop box, and I got it this morning.
Yeah, so they're pretty current.
Then I'm gonna email on Friday, Saturday to remind them, so.
You're good with that?
You wanna go with Matt Corey?
Sure. Seems reasonable, okay.
We'll need to make a motion.
Um, I have one other thing when this is done.
I make a motion, we accept Matt Corey's proposed proposal for the generators. Doesn't need to be more specific than that.
That includes the concrete pad.
That includes. A foundational pad, if you're gonna do fiberglass instead of concrete, you wanna say it that way?
All right, so then, as long as it's in writing, I'm sure it'll be fine.
I'll second it.
All those in favor? All right. Kathy, did you want to say something else about this project?
About the grant, yes. Um, when Michael Fannin was our emergency management director, he does not own a cellphone or want to own a cellphone. And when there's an emergency, we're required, we, but he really is required to document, um. The emergency and take photographs, and they need to be geo-located, meaning you need to have, um. You know, the latitude and longitude on the photo, which a cellphone does. But Michael never had a cellphone, so he kind of struggled with the locational piece. So he asked me to include in this grant four hundred and fifty dollars for, essentially, it's a GPS, um, camera. And, um, now that Ray is the emergency management director, I contacted him and said like, hey, is this something you're gonna use? Or do you have a cellphone? And he said, I have a cellphone, and he said, I don't know how to do it, so I told him how to do it, and he's like, oh, yeah, that's easy, I don't need that thing. So I would like you to consider passing a motion to, um, not buy that thing that costs four hundred. I can tell you, it's a Garmin something, something, something. Um, so I don't, I don't think we need it any longer, and Ray agreed as our emergency management director. So if you could just pass a motion saying that, we'll just notify the grant that we're not gonna do it.
And does that help us with the grant? I mean, we already have the grant.
Well, we, if we bought it, we would pay half of it. But I think no one, I don't know who would use it, I don't know, Eric, if you would use it, but I think you have a cellphone, so.
I didn't, I was forgetting we were on the hook for the, for fifty percent, so.
Yeah, it doesn't mean we have that four hundred and fifty necessarily to spend. Um, so we're just gonna keep our fingers crossed that Procter gas is, comes in within the amount we have left. I, I would hope we would be fine, but the salesman there was quite cagey, and he told me to put three thousand dollars in per location for setting a tank, which seemed. Like a lot to me.
That's a lot.
I think they were, yeah, just in case they ran into.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, I guess this is another question. We can get a price for owning our own tank if we have enough money, because that would make the gas less expensive. Um, if you want, or we can just, you know, do the same kind of arrangement. We, the town has it, the town garage and the fire department already has it, the fire department, where it's the company's, um, tank. And you pay the going rate, basically.
But the other flip side of that is they come out in service. If we own it.
Correct.
On the hook for paying for service to the tank and stuff, they own it, they service it.
That's correct.
Do we need to decide that tonight?
We don't need the GPS.
Uh, I think if you could just provide guidance, I mean, if you want, we can ask them to price it both ways, but it'd be. You know, Kevin was pretty clear, if you guys as a board wanna just make that decision, then I don't have to come back to you. We can just move forward.
Be with their service?
Yeah, yeah, very much so.
And that's who you have, right? Kevin, you have Procter gas?
Yes, and, ooh.
Yeah, I think that's why the town got Procter gas at the town garage. Is that your memory, Gail?
Yes.
I thought we changed.
No, you changed two Procter gas.
Okay, all right, so I knew.
Guys were ripping you off.
Yes, I knew it changed somewhere in there, but so if I would keep it, I would keep it, that we rent it. I wouldn't buy it, because then, like I said, we're on the hook to any maintenance. This way they cover it.
How often do you, have we needed maintenance?
Not very often at all, but something happens and.
Do you want them to get a quote? I mean, it's just a matter of getting the information, we wanted to know.
Sure, I mean, if we think, we're meeting again in a couple of weeks anyway, so.
Did you hear that, Kathy?
I did hear that.
So if we wanted them to give us the numbers for both, what would that mean for?
That, well, you could do that for the town, and I think it's up to the fire department to decide for their tank, and they already have three tanks that they rent, so that would be weird for them. But I think the town decision is certainly this board's.
Yeah, we can get that, those numbers, just to know, okay. Um, and then, uh, I'll make a motion that we. No longer request the GPS Garmin camera for four hundred.
You're moving to not purchase the Garmin.
Not purchase the Garmin camera. I will second that, on paper.
All right.
All right, is there anything else?
Um, Gail, do you wanna contact the contractors and, uh, let them know what the select board decided, and then you can have, uh, Matt call me. When he's ready to go.
Okay.
And, um, just to clear this with you guys, when we wrote the grant, um, the historic people are kind of, um, picky about where the generator goes on the town. Office, because it's on the historic register, so we're gonna check with Procter gas. The preferred location is on the east side, basically behind the building, as long as Procter gas can fill the tank. And because we're doing, sorry.
And as long as it's not on the town septic system.
And either you can meet with Procter gas directly, Gail, or you could mark the tank if you have a pretty good idea where it is. I, I have no idea.
Know where the tank is, the leach field is on the east side, I have to find the. Drawing if I can to see how many feet away it is from the building.
I think the hope would be to put it relatively close to the building, so the tank is super important and maybe the leach field less so.
Yeah.
Okay, what, well, the leach field wouldn't be right next to the building, I think so what you're saying, Kathy?
Would be for the.
Yeah, you have, there's a pipe between the tank and the leach field.
And there's a certain distance, I think the tank has to be from the building, the.
Correct.
Yep.
Ten feet today. Who the heck knows what it was when that thing was put in, though?
Okay.
No, I thought you said propane.
You're talking about the septic tank?
Two different things.
And he's talking about. Out here by the library, during the. During the library and the old firehouse, the tank is right there. The leach field is down. That's what we go, thank you.
Right, Gail, do you have anything else for this? Agenda items?
Um, well. At the last select board meeting, you appointed six people to the E and I committee, but you didn't change the size of it, so there's technically four vacancies on it.
Okay.
So I was just gonna post those vacancies, and then at your July meeting, you could decide whether you want, if you don't have anybody else volunteering, you can change the size of the community or company.
Sounds good. And then ARPA list review, was that for the cemetery? That, looks like that asterisk.
That was, because we didn't do it at the last one, we're gonna do it here, but I didn't send it out to you.
Yeah.
But you had it from before, but.
Right.
It's usually better to send it again.
Always. I forgot to bring it. You can put it in the pocket.
All right. Yeah.
So we're putting the ARPA off until the next one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Make a plan for spending that, on the amount of it.
Right, and the good news is, I don't know if I shared this yet, I think I did, is that you can sink a big chunk of it into the capital fund. Because it's a already created reserve fund. And it's on a specific purpose, so if you wanted to spend it for something else afterwards, you'd have to go to voters to have their permission to spend it in something else.
Something, so that's going to the old creamery, right?
Thirty-eight hundred.
Yeah.
Or more.
That's what, that's what that number, okay. Do you need more?
Oh, God, yeah.
There is a.
Okay, no, I mean.
Stupid question.
We're happy to get what we, what we can get. We, we have a lot of work on that building. I, I think banking would be a good thing to start with.
I think for the, um.
I have the list. It's gonna happen in July.
If we can get a couple of some.
You know, shit, it's right, so. Well then.
Morning.
She was just looking up something.
Um. I mean, if there is other stuff, I mean, without going too crazy, maybe put together. Yeah.
On there, you can decide. I think at one point it was maybe ten thousand, we were setting aside for it, but, yes.
We have inside work.
Oh, for, okay, all right.
We have some careful stuff in any.
All right, so it's not just the thirty-eight hundred that we're looking at.
No, but we would, we do need power there, so we can have contractors.
Right.
And actually do stuff about running.
There's like a list, I think they've even broken it down for low hanging.
To bury it.
Yeah.
No, the electric cord.
It could, yeah.
All right.
Seen people do that. Not a very big.
I was, but it's not.
Okay.
I'll get it, make sure.
We'll put that on our agenda for July. And our next meeting is a regular second Thursday, or do you like second person? Just so we can all hear it, I'm gonna look up that. July thirteenth.
Eric, the parade is July eighth. Are you gonna put some trucks in that parade?
What? We can get some drivers.
The bucket loader.
Yeah, that's small. That's a new hot rod, that's small. Little downhill scary fast though.
What's that? Yeah. Yeah. So, and you and I.
Make it.
They make it down here, but you might not make it back out then.
Probably gonna have to pull it out.
Whatever, I just, when the time comes, I'm gonna do the creamery and then the back of this building.
Yeah, you won't have to do it.
Well, right, right, um. But is there gonna, what are you thinking, a weekend, or are you thinking a time when? Like a Friday? Okay, that's what I was, yeah, that's fine.
And it'd be this Friday, so it'd be ten. But doesn't look like what was gonna be your thing.
Thunderstorms all weekend. I, um, hopefully gonna be moving to shed this weekend.
Couple days of being early.
Yeah, probably two days out, yeah, probably two days. It's not gonna take long to shoot that prime, yeah.
Right, anything else? All right. Adjourn at eight oh seven. Wanna vanilla envelope, Gail? Cause what the.
Chairs.
The bits that we didn't accept.
Everybody comes and looking for.
Whoops. What do you mean, you, you never been on that?
Is there anything?
Turn off the recording.
Um. Which is, uh.
No, certainly in the week.
But we only had three recordings from yesterday, so.
Yeah.
There'll be more. Yeah, there's, there's still one more.
Yeah, it's funny.
Okay, they get to.
Mowing bill in the mail yesterday, so.